I call to order this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, July 15, 2024. If the Recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Counselor Nishioka?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Varney?
Here.
Mayor Hoy?
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Do we have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. I move for approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion by Nishioka, second by Stapleton. Counselor, anything on your motion?
I do not need to add anything to that.
Thank you. If the Recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Nishioka?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Gwynn?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoy?
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Nishioka, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
May I ask you a question?
Yes, we just have public comment, there's no need for a motion.
That's what's -- thank you very much. There are no additions or deletions.
Great, thank you. All right, we're now on to the presentation of the 2024 Revenue Task Force recommendations. Are we going straight to Colleen, or Mr. Staley, are you kicking us off?
Going straight to Colleen.
All right, straight to Colleen. You can hit that button, there you go.
You'd think I would be used to that by now. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Colleen Rosillas from Moss Adams for the record. So we are here to talk about the results of the Revenue Task Force. You all know why the task force was seated, but for the public that are watching and are in the audience, the city has a significant revenue shortfall, the city has to balance budget by law, and so we convened a Revenue Task Force representative of the community. We had 27 members who recommended a variety of options, a menu essentially that's coming to you all tonight. Tonight's goal is simply to receive information, ask questions, discuss what the task force came up with. We have four representatives from the task force here to present their results. We're not making any decisions tonight, but this is the first of multiple planned discussions, the next one being August 19th. So we'll go through a quick overview of the task force process, we'll talk about the community engagement that we did throughout the task force, then the task force members will present their recommendations and we'll talk about next steps. So the city's has a structural budget deficit, we know it's at least $15 million. Throughout the course of the Revenue Task Force, we looked at different pathways, including restoring levels of service to pre-great recession levels. We know that could be up to $50 million a year in terms of services that could be provided in addition to what's already being provided today. And as we'll see through the process and in the packet that you've been provided, there's quite a bit of information around different levels of revenue that could be raised by the different options. The Revenue Task Force was not convened to look at the city's budget, it was just convened to look at revenue, and the work was done in tandem with the Budget Committee. And so what the task force did was looked at all the revenue options that were available, and some that might actually not be available to cities. We narrowed it down from a list that was over 40, and then came to you with this menu that were grouped in long-term, medium-term, and short-term options, so that you could take a look at solving the city's budget deficit from a couple of different lenses. I want to take a minute to just thank the Revenue Task Force members who put a ton of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of brain power in this room. There are a lot of them here tonight, so thank you. Thank you so much for the service that you gave to the community, and I was really impressed with how well everyone represented the city and really thought kind of beyond themselves in every discussion. It was really admirable to see across the board. We also had some really great staff support, so we've got some names on the board of folks who really dug into this work. I also wanted to just shout out Ashley from CCTV who supported every single meeting and made sure that we were broadcast, Brent Scott and Jose from IT who supported and made sure that everything was online and accessible, and then Elizabeth Kennedy Wong, the city's communications officer, who is not on this list but should have been, she helped us out tremendously as well. So the task force met seven times, starting in January, basically right off the heels of being nominated by you all, and that represents about 25 hours of meetings in this room, plus a pretty significant amount of work in between meetings. So those of you who are here today, thank you for being here again and for not being too sick of this room. They really put in a lot of time and effort, and I think that's what we want to communicate. We also did, on the bottom here you'll see, we did focus groups, we did a community survey and town halls that all helped to inform the task force, and you'll hear about the results of those tonight. Annie Rose is going to cover our community engagement.
Fantastic. I am Annie Rose Favreau from the Moss Adams team. We wanted to provide a brief overview of the community engagement activities that we did as part of this work. If you go to the next slide, there are really three different pieces, as Colleen mentioned, that were undertaken to help get a better understanding of what is the community thinking and feeling about these topics, as well as potential revenue options. So we started with a series of focus groups. These focus groups were organized by Ward, and these were, this was a type of input activity where we asked people who were interested, excited, wanted to provide input, to come together into a small group and help share some of their perspectives, so we could get a really qualitative understanding of what some of the priorities might look like, but also what some of the questions that are coming up, because we wanted to use the focus groups as a means to help inform some of the later input activities, including the town hall structure and the community survey questions as well. So we started with the focus groups, then we moved on to town halls. Those, there were three town halls, two in-person, one online, and those were designed so that any member of the community could come and participate, share their input into this process, ask the questions that they had to. And then finally, we did a statistically valid community survey, and by "we" I mean DHM. John Horvick is going to be speaking more on this topic in a little bit more detail around what that survey looked like. But this one, as opposed to the first two options, where it was really people were coming who wanted to be involved in this process, the community survey was also done so that it could be representative of the full community. It is a statistically significant survey, and so for that, we were doing outreach to individuals rather than having them come to us as well, so that we could have both of those perspectives represented. In terms of the focus groups, I would say this is fairly common in general, the demographics of who showed up to those focus groups, we had 101 individuals invited there, or who applied and then were invited as part of this work. In general, they skew relatively into the older demographics, skew fairly white, and skew higher income. So again, not to be, that's fairly to be expected for this type of group in terms of who has capacity, energy, and time to be able to participate in this, but it was really nice to see that we still could get a pretty broad representation across all of those groups. And then, of course, the focus groups were done by geography, so we got full Ward representation there as well. In terms of some of the feedback that was shared in these groups, we did not include all of the pieces, this is included in the full packet, but some of the highlights in terms of what was coming out of those focus groups, we asked folks to decide where would they would invest, given amount of money, I believe it was $600, to get a sense of which of the services that the city is providing currently are most critical to you, where would you invest those funds? A safe community, welcoming and livable community, natural environment and stewardship, and safe, reliable, and efficient infrastructure were the top contenders there. We also asked about knowledge of the revenue challenge, how much information they already had on this topic, perceptions around whether or not this was actually an issue for the city. In terms of the largest pieces of feedback that we received there, the two largest groups, the vast majority, both agreed that there is an actual revenue shortfall. One group felt like it was appropriate for the city to fix this by increasing revenues only, the other group wanted to look at both cuts and increases to revenue, but those represent sort of the largest areas of feedback from the focus group. And then finally, as Colleen mentioned, we did some work around different pathways, revenue pathways, and what this comes down to, there's a lot more details in the packet itself, but basically, pathway one is what if we raise no revenue, we continued as our budget is today currently, all the way up to pathway six, which is basically, we have all of the current services, plus additional services, plus homelessness response services, and making sure that we could increase staffing support over time as the city grows, so being able to maintain that and make that sustainable. And so that gets you all the way up to pathway six. So what's interesting here from the focus group was that we had some members in all, in support of all of those pathways, but certainly the largest groups were toward pathways four, five, and six in this focus group. So if you go to the next, we also, as I mentioned, hosted some town halls. We did not ask for full demographic information, we had about 150 people attend those events, and about 111 of them shared some demographic information in the same way as the focus groups. In general, this was skewing toward white participants. If you go to the next slide, the town hall results, while they were not exactly apples-to-apples comparison with the focus groups, because we changed how some of these questions were asked, we did receive some feedback here that we wanted to highlight. First and foremost was thinking about which services would you actively wish to pay more for, so that's in that first column, starting with recreation services at the top there. We asked some questions like, who should pay more? Should it be businesses or the general community? Or would you rather have taxes and fees on specific items, or general taxes and fees that are paid for the full community? So we asked some of those types of questions. And then the last graph here to highlight is the preferred pathways, we asked that question as well, and interestingly, at the town hall, this was a lot of folks who were very actively involved in this topic, really excited to come and share their input, and in terms of their feedback on pathways, they skewed quite heavily towards pathways five and six, so those higher revenue pathways that would enable the city to really expand service options as well. So more on all of those pieces, but I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about the community survey.
Thank you very much, John Horvick, Senior Vice President at DHM Research. I'm going to walk through the survey results. So before I talk about the survey results, just a little bit of context, just probably to echo what's already been said, this is one of the tools that was used to gather community input. Every tool that we use to gather input is going to have its strengths and it's going to have its limitations. The strengths of the town hall and the focus groups is that people can learn things along the way, they can ask each other questions, and they can maybe frame things in ways that weren't considered ahead of time. Sometimes they're also self-selecting too, and they may not be representing the community, so they have that limitation. Survey, on the other hand, we talked to hundreds, in this case, 400 people, randomly selected with our very best efforts to make sure that they represented the community. Now that means some might know a lot about the issue, and some might be learning about it for the first time. Also means they get an opportunity to ask questions back to us, and so it has some limitations there. So this real strength of talking to lots of people, being able to look at the representation, being able to look at maybe how different groups respond, but also some limitations to it. So I would encourage you, as we're looking at these results, to think about in the whole context of everything that you have in front of you. So that said, this is a survey of 400 Salem residents. The way we reach out to people nowadays is a mix of telephone calls, you know, call people up on the phone and try to reach them, usually in the evening time or during the weekend, and get somebody to engage in a survey with an interviewer. A lot of people don't want to be reached that way, and so we make, we have to make sure we're reaching people the way that they do want to be reached, and so folks are also selected to get, receive a text message, where they give a link on the, in the message, where they can click on that link and take the survey on their phone as well. They could also send that link to another device, but that's where the preference is, but most people will do it on their phone. So some people, if they want to talk to an interviewer, they have that opportunity. For folks who don't want to talk to an interviewer, they have that opportunity as well. This was in early April, it was a 16-minute survey, which is pretty comprehensive. We had an opportunity to ask lots of questions, and I'll be honest, that's about as long as you can keep people engaged in a survey nowadays. So we took maximum time that we could get with folks, we took it to learn as much as we could. With a survey, people respond to the opportunity to take a survey sort of at different rates. People who are more educated tend to participate than those who are less, for example. Women tend to participate more than men, and we know that when we're doing a survey. So if we don't set what we call quotas ahead of time, we'll fill up too quickly with groups that are eager to answer questions, and then we will miss groups who are less eager. So we set quotas, we look at Salem's population by age and by gender, area of the city, these different characteristics, and we make sure that when we've reached a certain number for any bucket, we make, we put all our efforts into reaching those underrepresented groups, so we end up with a sample that is reflective of the community. The survey was available both English and in Spanish, so if people wanted to take a Spanish-language version, they had that option. Three, you'll see in a second, about 3% of the completes were in Spanish. There may be more Spanish speakers out there that took it, but just opted to take it in English, so I can't, I can't say that for sure, but we do know that 3% opted to take it in Spanish. As a margin of error, 4.9%, and sometimes things might not add up to 100, just do it around it. So that's the logistics of it. Now let's get into just a little bit of, I won't spend a lot of time on here, but here are the demographics of the participants, if you want to dig in. Again, we did our best to make sure that it's reflective of the community. Any survey is going to be imperfect, but we worked real hard to ensure that we heard from a wide swath of people that are representative of the community by age and gender, race, area of the city, those different characteristics. I'm not sure if you can see the map there, but you can, the map in the packet you have, you can see sort of the background there, but you can see the area of the city, housing type, years in Salem, so these different characteristics. So when you start a survey, it's really important to ask a kind of a question that's easy to answer and identifies to the participants, this is about community issues, right? We're not trying to sell you toothpaste, we're trying to get you involved in something about the community, and this is one of different ways you could do that. This is just a question that Salem has asked in the past, are you satisfied or not with the quality of life in Salem? And so we had worked with you in 2022 and asked the same question, and so we just put this comparison here. 65% in 2022 said that they were satisfied with the quality of life in Salem. Now 58% in 2024. This is a really global question, so this isn't necessarily about capital C city, right? There could be all sorts of things that are happening in the world that would make them feel less satisfied about their quality of life. Some may have to do with the city specifically, some might have to do other things, but we do see that there is this decline from 2022 to 2024, although most are still saying that they're satisfied. Now, we also asked this open-ended question, we've been doing this with you since 2017, just asking people, what is the biggest issue you'd like the city to do something about? And this question's asked open-ended, so people can say anything that they want to us. We listen to all their feedback, we read all their comments, we try to put them into categories that fit together. And on the left side, you can see the 2024 numbers, so 41% of all the comments we received back mentioned something to do with homelessness. Another 11% about public safety concerns. So really homelessness stands far and above any other issue, and also because we've asked this question consistently going back to 2017, we can see the changes over time. So 41%, that's a lot. I actually, when opening a question like this, I usually say anything above 20% is really something to pay attention to. If you can get one out of five people in the community to agree on what is important, that's a big deal. So this is twice that. It's also down considerably, right? It's up at 58% in 2021, 57% in 2022. We didn't ask in 2023, but it's down to 41% now. For public safety, you can see it was at, jumped up to 26%, or 16% in 2022, it's ebbed a little bit to 11% now. So these trends are important in thinking about, when we're going to ask people about, are you willing to spend more money? Let's us, all of us keep in mind, what are the things that people are focused on and concerned about, perhaps to think about how they might want that money spent. So then services and value, we did ask this question, are you satisfied with the value of services you receive considering the taxes that you pay? And we do see that the community is divided. 48% that they're satisfied, 48% that they're not satisfied. I will note that the very dissatisfied is about twice as large as the very satisfied. In the full report, I'm not going to show it here, we did do analysis in some of the questions, looking to see if people, if they're satisfied or not satisfied about the value of services receiving, how they would think about revenue. I won't focus on that much today, but it is in the full report. We have asked this question in the past again for Salem, and you can see that the blue line or the greenish line, however it shows up, what you're looking at, is the satisfied percentage, and there was this erosion, pretty considerable erosion, from 2017 to 2022. Fell by more than half, from 68%, 70% in 2018, down to 30% in 2022. It is up now. It increased from 30% to satisfied number to 48% in 2024. And we have seen this a lot of our research, whether it's the state of Oregon or Portland metro area communities, or other places in the state we've been, where there was a real decline in sort of however you measure, whether satisfaction or asking if the communities had in the right direction or not, that really fell in 2020, 2021, 2022, and now we are seeing this bounce back. Now, it's not great, the numbers aren't great in the places we're at, but we are seeing this comeback in places, and we here see it in Salem as well. So then we asked this kind of global question, would you be willing to pay any more in taxes and fees or not? And if you're willing to pay more, would you be willing to pay more to increase services or just to ensure that we're able to maintain services? So on the left side, the orange side, or the 48%, a plurality said, who said, I don't want to pay any more in taxes and fees than we have in Salem now, even if it means cutting down on city services and employees. So that's 48, and then the 44 said they would be willing to pay more, 22% said that they'd be willing to pay more and for higher services, and a similar level said I'd be willing to pay more, but only to maintain the level of services that we have now. Now I will say, on either side of this chart, we didn't specify what services, right? So perhaps that 48% in the orange would change if we said it was for police that would be cut, or fire that would be cut. Similarly, perhaps the greens would change if we said, would you be willing to pay more for, fill in the blank. All right, so do keep that in mind as well. We are saying from a community, I would, just to be clear-eyed about it, that's pretty ambivalent about increased revenue. Well, if we did push them a little bit and asked about specific services, so these are the services we asked about, fire, police, park maintenance, library, recreation, and code enforcement, and then whether they'd be willing to pay more in local taxes to fund those specific things. There is two that get above 50%, fire and police. Everything else is below 50%. Parks is right on the edge there at 49, but the two that are clearly above 50% are fire and police, and everything else below. Just for some context, we have been asking about satisfaction with city services, specific city services in Salem, and it's just as you're thinking about the results and what people might be willing to pay for and what they not be willing to pay for, this is just some background in terms of how people have rated their level of satisfaction. Fire, the level of satisfaction is at 73% as of 2022, we did not ask this question in this most recent survey, this is historical context. And people might be saying, I'd be willing to pay for fire because I'm really satisfied, and I think they're doing a good job, and I want to continue to invest in that thing that I'm satisfied in. Police are a little bit lower at 48% in 2022. Do keep in mind what the world was like in 2022, what was on people's minds in 2022, that people maybe would be willing to pay, invest in police because they're like, we have some public safety issues, police doesn't get the funding that I'm satisfied with, and therefore I'd want to make investments in. This is just historical context for you as you're sort of considering what the results mean. So here is, then we asked our participants specifically the criteria and then the funding mechanisms that the task force was considering. Before we asked this question, we did inform our participants that there's this budget challenge, that the city is looking at not having sufficient revenue to maintain services at its current levels. We did ask them about, have you heard about this? How informed are you? 15% they've heard a great deal about it, or excuse me, 18% that they've heard a great deal about it. Another 54% said they've heard some. Now that's 72%, and we do highlight that 72%, although just to be honest with you, I would say that 18% is probably more realistic. When you're going to sit in a focus group and people will tell you that they have a little bit of information, when you ask them to describe specifics, they often will struggle with that. But so maybe one out of five are really paying close attention to this, 54% maybe feel like they've heard, another 54% they've heard something, but don't, don't, don't misread that 72% as we have a, you know, a community that's really engaged on this issue at this Those who rated the city's financial situation as poor report higher levels of knowledge about it. So those who were really in this, early in the survey said, the city's finances aren't in good shape in a question that we asked, they indicated that they've been paying more attention about it. Now, it could be that those who are more negative are paying more attention, it could also be people who are paying more attention are learning something important and kind of holding a more negative view, but this difference does exist in the results and worth knowing. So here is the point of the survey where we did our best in the time that we had, in the 16 minutes we had with folks, to have them walk through the process that the task force, Revenue Task Force was walking through. So the Revenue Task Force had considered or created a set of criteria in which to evaluate different funding, or excuse me, revenue options. So as you're looking at a long list of revenue options and they were making their decision, they used a particular set of criteria to decide whether or not they wanted to give their thumbs up or thumbs down. And then, so we asked our participants about these criteria as well, and whether they were important or not to them. So these aren't DHM's thinking, we did our best to inform the participants in the survey what the task force thinking is, and asked them to consider that as well. So legal viability generates sustainable ongoing revenue, equitable, not having negative environmental impacts, or not having negative impacts on the local economy, how difficult it is, that implementation effort, how much revenue it's going to generate, and the timeline to funding. These are the things that people considered. And then we asked, are these important or not? So they, it was on a scale from very important to not at all important. On the right there, you can see the total importance. The number one was, it was important not to have negative impacts on the local economy. And we kind of put that in a tier, sort of the top tier by our, by our math, which I can explain, but sort of stands above the others. And then there's sort of this middle tier, that sustainable ongoing revenue would be equitable, negative, not having negative environmental impacts, the legal viability, can you do it? Implementation effort, timeline to funding, and revenue generating potential at the bottom. So number one, most important was not having negative impacts on the local economy. Number two, generates sustainable and ongoing revenue, and I'd say three, equitable. Those are the top three. And then we asked people to consider some pretty stark trade-offs. Now, we understand that the world's more complicated than the questions that we gave our participants, but we wanted to see if we pushed them, do they lean one way or the other on some pretty typical trade-offs that we consider in tax policy? So on the left here, one trade-off we provided was, should we rely more on taxes and fees paid by businesses in the community? Or should we rely more on taxes and fees paid by individuals in the community? It was a similar question that was discussed in the town halls and the focus groups. 49%, now it's less than half, but a plurality said rely more on taxes and fees paid by businesses, 31% on individuals. Now on the right side, another trade-off we asked, rely more on taxes and fees on specific items or services, paid by the people who use them or buy them, or rely more on general taxes or fees paid by everybody? And here, it's a little bit more clear, 54% specific fees, or taxes fees on specific items versus 37% more general taxes. And I'm not going to go through all the demographics here, you can spend some time looking at them, but here, we did sort of pull out to show that there are differences in the community and how they respond to these questions. So on the trade-off between rely more on taxes and fees paid by businesses and the other side would be individuals, we do see, if we look at the very top here, 18, 29-year-olds, they were 60% businesses, 26% individuals, which is 19 percentage points more than the category at the bottom, Republicans, where more split, 41, 34. Again, I'm not going to focus a lot on any individuals, but it's more for you to know as you're out talking to the community, and your different sort of groups that you might represent or who you're engaging with, they probably going to have a different perspective on a question like this. So even though overall it's 49%, there are differences throughout the community, you can see them there. Similarly, on this question, rely more on taxes and fees for specific items or services, again, for the community wide, it's 54%, but from our top on the right here, it's 65-plus, it was ages 65-plus, it was 66, 26 on that split, and then at the bottom, for those with 100K incomes, it was 44, 45, which is again, just so you to know as you're listening to the communities, you're engaging the community, to be aware that there are differences throughout. Here's another trade-off we asked about. The formatting is a little funny on the slide here, but, and the one option was raise taxes and fees on what we already pay before implementing something new. and fees on what we already pay before implementing something new? Or implement new taxes and fees before raising the ones we already pay? And you can see, there's a lot of folks who said they aren't sure. 33% said they don't know. But twice as many roughly said raise taxes and fees on what we already pay before implementing something new. And again, you can see some of these demographics on the right where these differences exist. So pretty widespread from the, you know, from the top group, 18, 29-year-olds, to those who are 45, 64 at the bottom. And then one more, which is more clear. One option was people pay amount that's proportional to income or wealth. The other option is everybody pays the same amount regardless of their income or wealth. In here, it's almost, well, two and a half or so to one, but 64% say proportional, 26% say everybody pays the same amount regardless of their income or wealth. And here, we see very large differences across the demographic groups in some pretty expected ways, particularly with partisanship ideology. This is one of the questions that people become Democrats or Republicans. This is a dividing thing. You see very, very big differences here. You also see some important differences by age and other criterias, or other demographics as well. So those are the criteria. And then here are the funding mechanisms that we asked about. Again, DHM didn't come up with these. These are reflective of what the task force was considering. Wasn't everything on their list, but it was the ones that were at the top when we were putting together the, the survey instrument. The property taxes, sales taxes, business taxes, income taxes, user fees, and utility fees. And I will say that within any one of these buckets, there are different taxes. So take business taxes. There is license fees, there's taxes on local nonprofit corporations, there's parking taxes, taxes on a company's gross sales. These are different things, and people may respond to any one of those individually. But we did had to limit the options to some degree, and these were sort of the buckets of things that the revenue task force was considering. So this is not definitive, but hopefully it is instructive with your thinking. So then we asked, are these good or poor ways to raise revenue for the city? The top for good were user fees and business taxes. Business taxes is just at 50%, so it's not as though there's overwhelming support here in the community for business taxes, but it is in the top two. The top one at 66% was, was user fees. Lower, property taxes, just 37% said that that was a good way to fund services. Income taxes, 36%. Sales taxes, 35%. And utility fees, 27%. So well below 50%. And I just, for political purposes, meaning if you're going to ask the voters for something, do pay attention to that bright orange, the dark orange. Those who are strongly opposed to something, when you see big on that, that is something you know is going to be a challenge to get people to change their mind on something. But again, any one of these categories included multiple examples, there may be support for an individual one in there, but as a category, user fees and business taxes were the highest. So that's how they rated them individually. We did ask them to rank them as well, because there could be differences, but there weren't in this case, user fees and business taxes. Whether you ranked them here or you rated them individually, they came out on top. And then lastly, we did inform the participants by telling them by state law, some entities, including Marion County, Oregon State, and the US federal property owners do not pay property taxes on buildings in Salem that could fund city services. Would you support or oppose Salem City Council working to change this law? So these government entities would pay to compensate for some of the cost providing services in Salem, and that is a popular position. 79% say yes, including 56% who support that strongly. That's it. So I will pause, and I'm happy to entertain questions, but I'll turn it back to the team.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Counselor Nardik.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Did you define recreation services for the survey respondents?
I don't have the questionnaire in front of me, but if we did, it would have been very minimal. Yeah.
Well, do you have any information on what they thought recreation services meant?
I don't, as I sit here right now, I'd have to look at the questionnaire to find the exact wording to say if it was something more specific than recreational services, and I could pull that out, but as I stand here right now, I don't know. What I do know is that it's pretty consistent, police and fire are the categories that people are more interested in. And then if we describe things in a different way, more concrete way, talked about benefits or opportunities, opinions might change.
Are there other questions? Counselor Varnie.
Thank you. I had a quick question. Do you have any idea in looking at the demographic breakdown, any idea of how many were business owners?
I don't. We did not ask that question. I could only, my best estimate is it'd be reflective of what the business owner population is in the city of Salem. And the business owner population, the actual owner population of any community is pretty small. But I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, and it's a good one. As you consider to do community outreach, you absolutely will want to engage business owners to find out what their specific interests and concerns are, because we're unable to pull that out in this survey.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I'm trying to figure out the tension in them, and I'm hoping you can help me through this. So on, on the satisfied with the value of city services, we see a split between satisfied and dissatisfied. But on the next section, we talked about that they don't want to pay any more in taxes. How do you square that between being dissatisfied with the current state of affairs and also unwilling to invest?
Oh, there could be many reasons. One could definitely be the concerns about their, excuse me, need a glass of water, concerns about their own pocketbooks, whether or not they, they may not be happy with, they may not be satisfied at the level of services, but they may not feel like they can afford more to pay for them. Or they might not have confidence in the city to be able to deliver those services. We do know that economic concerns are particularly high right now, and I think part of it is probably just, just I don't have the opportunity, ability to pay more, even if I'm not happy.
And then I have one more, if that's okay, Mayor? Also, that same tension when we were talking about the town halls and about, about your, about your survey, where we're talking about not having, limiting the negative impacts on the business community. But at the town hall, yet we saw kind of a different approach to that. And then, yet also later on, we said that we wanted to rely more on taxes and fees paid by businesses. So I'm feeling kind of a little whiplash as we go through this with this topic in particular. Could you help me sort some of that out?
So I, maybe to reflect back on what you're saying, and maybe say something, attention that I saw on the data that might not be exactly what you're saying. But on the one hand, people said, we're concerned about negative impacts on the economy. On the other hand, they said that we should tax businesses. And so one interpretation might be that that's in conflict with each other. And you know what? It might be. Another thing might be is that they're not interpreting businesses on taxes as a negative impact on the economy. But we see, now, what a business is to respond it, it's hard to know. If we described it as a small, local business, you know, a laundromat or a restaurant, right? They may interpret that as a negative impact on the economy in one way. If they're hearing that though as a large business that's not paying its fair share in taxes, they may hear it a different way. So this is another one where it's informative, but it's not, you know, continue to do that outreach, because I agree that there might be a tension in that. I think one, what my first blush is that they just didn't think that a tax on businesses necessarily negative impact on the economy. But it sort of begs the question, what sort of businesses were they thinking about when they answered that question?
Yeah. Always more to look into. And then one last question, but sorry. When we're talking about taxes and fees on specific items or services, how do you explain that with also, you know, the positivity for that, or I don't know how to?
Yeah, so it's what they lean towards given the option, right?
Yes, yes. But then they're very against sales tax, right? And I think that that's just an Oregon pledge. I think you have to be born and bred to be against a sales tax. How do you, because in my mind, how do you square that, right? Because in my mind, a sales tax is really, you're paying a sales, or tax for the things that you're using and you're wanting to buy. So how do you square that? And how did you interpret that as it came through?
My guess is people interpret a sales tax as a tax on, paying a sales tax on buying, I don't know, clothes for your kids, doesn't feel the same to them as paying a sales tax for a specific service I receive from the city. And so I think what they're saying is if I'm receiving a service from the city, whether it's recreation or I don't know what exactly, fill in the blank for those sorts of things, parking, right? I should be paying, or somebody, maybe they, should be paying for that thing that they're using. But me paying for my kid's school for clothes is not a city service, even if it funds the city service. I think that's the distinction that we're picking up. And you're right, Oregonians are also going to have an extra chip on their shoulder because we just are no sales tax state, and that's part of, obviously, what we're picking up too.
Apparently, yes. Okay. I think those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Counselor Hoy.
Just a curiosity, but is there a reason, I mean, I'm looking at page 20, why the downtown area isn't circled? Were people downtown?
Oh, they were included, but we just divided, we, this is the, this, we can divide the city up in different ways. It needs to be large enough so we can have enough people in any particular group to be able to look at the data one particular way or not. And so we can do Ward, and we have that in the data. We could do zip code, we could do other things. Just historically with the city of Salem, we've just done, is three groups that are large enough to do some analysis, west side, north, northeast, south. And so downtown is in there. I just haven't broken that out as a specific group. And that's, we could do that, that, the data exists to be able to do that, but just haven't done it in this report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there additional questions about the data? Counselor Nardik.
Sure. Just about methodology. It's been a long time since my college statistics class. And you say this is a statistically valid community survey, but you only surveyed 400 people. I mean, I know it doesn't take a high percentage for it to be a scientifically valid study, but this seems like a pretty tiny percentage.
So bigger is always better, for sure. There's limitations that we run up into. One is, let's be honest, budget. The survey would be more expensive with a larger sample size. We didn't have the budget for that. So with a survey, you're paying for different things. One is how many people you talk to? Another is how long are you going to gauge them? So that's a trade-off we have to consider. Another is just how big of a sample is feasible in the cities, this community the size of Salem, given the population size, given the number of phone numbers that exist, given the number of people who will answer a survey, and there's a limit there too. I will say that a sample size of 400 is 4.9% margin of error. If you went to 500, it'd be 4.4. If you went to 600, it'd be 4. You don't get a huge decline in accuracy once you get past 400. I will say, the other thing though, if you're, when you consider these results in the context of everything that you're getting, 400 is less important probably for the overall results, but it does matter once you start dividing the community into different groups. So when you start looking at women versus men, or higher income versus lower income, margins of errors for all those get bigger too. And so, yes, there is a margin of error. It's 4.9% for this survey. If we went to 500, it'd be 4.4, 600, it'd be 4. You know, does that make that much of a difference in the overall results? Everybody gets to make that determination for themselves. But it does make a difference as you sort of look at those subgroups. You have to be careful as you're looking at those subgroups and, you know, how much confidence you might put into that.
Counselor Phillips.
Thank you. Just to kind of maybe put this in historical context if possible, I think I've participated now in-
400 people that respond. It's ensuring that those 400 are actually representative of the community. So as I said before, if we took the first 400 people to respond, it'd be too old, it'd be too white, it'd be too many homeowners, it'd be too educated, because those are the people that tend to take surveys. So once we get those easy to reach groups filled up first, all the effort goes into reaching those harder to reach folks. And so some of it is just reaching people and finding out that, hey, we've already filled that bucket up, and we need to go talk to somebody else to make sure we have a representative sample. Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Horvick? Counselor Varnie.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you about the margin of error, since it's plus or minus almost 5%. How should someone that's not familiar with surveys interpret that in terms of this survey?
You should, so it has a margin of error. I mean, so just to, to how to think about this, if you get a result that says 50% said X, you should assume that that result could be as low as 45, could be as high as 55. Now, it's, the odds are it's closer to 50 than either 45 or 55, but it has that margin of error at 4.9%. And so you should just, how should you use it? You should just keep that number, that sort of, you know, there's a little bit of potential wiggle room. The thing, I will emphasize this, you don't know which direction it goes. So if there is, it could be as equally likely to be lower as equally likely to be higher. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does, and I understand margin of error, but I was just asking for an explanation because there were some categories, some things in here that were pretty close.
Yeah, yep.
And they could go either way.
Yep.
Like the 60 and the 60%, you know?
Right. So some of these, we tried to put them, that's part of the reason we tried to put some of these into categories, where sort of like there's this top tier, like for the, I don't, I can't have the, the, the presentation in front of me, but sometimes like on the revenue mechanisms, we put them into different tiers to try to separate out. These ones that we really do feel like are, not just feel like, the numbers, the math says, are, are different. They really are truly higher than the other ones. And then other times, like, they're all sort of listed together because they're within the margin of error of each other. So if there's a two-point difference, it's two points to the best that we can measure it, but you're right to say, well, you know, maybe we should think about them as being pretty much the same. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Horvick, for being here. Colleen, what's next?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, is that Counselor Glenn? Is that you? You're not, your camera's not on. Is that you?
Sorry. Yes, that was me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not used to the Zoom, so I apologize.
No worries.
I was wondering your three top takeaways from your overall presentation.
Oh, that's a good question. My three top takeaways, communities, one, I'd say the community is pretty ambivalent about whether or not they'd be willing to pay more. And I, you know, the survey results say that. I think past election results say that as well, so that shouldn't be a surprise, but we remain in the community that's pretty divided about that. We did, the survey did not, the purpose of the survey was not to ask about how the money would be used. That's another purpose. This is about what revenue they might accept. But it's also clear that police and fire, public safety issues are their top priorities. We see that when we ask about it directly. I think we see it when we ask about what's the most important issue. Public safety and homelessness are towards the top. We see it in terms of what their satisfaction with services is in past surveys. So that would be another takeaway I would have. And then there's a real strong sense about equity. Equity is this difficult thing to work with, but there's this sense that people should be paying their fair share, and that people who have the ability to pay more should be paying more. Some of them are going to think about that in terms of an income tax. Some of them might think that businesses have the money to pay for that, that people are going to interpret that differently. But I think, for me, that those are the kind of three big things that stand out. Equity, police and fire is top concerns, and that, you know, right now, the community's pretty divided on whether or not they'd be willing to support additional revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen, where are we headed next?
We're handing this over to our task force members to present. Would you all like me to advance your slides for you?
Brett's got it.
Courtney's got it.
Brett? Brett?
I think the answer is yes.
We're ready for the task force.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is TJ Sullivan. I had the pleasure of serving on the Alternative Revenue Task Force. I commiserated with Counselor, former Counselor Smalldon. It's kind of like the mob. We keep trying to get out and keep getting pulled back in. But once, once you've served in this position, where you guys are serving right now, you develop a level of care and concern for the city, and you want to stay engaged and help in any way that you can. So hopefully, if we do our jobs right, you won't have to serve on Alternative Revenue Task Force down the road. There'll be something else you can serve on.
We, we were basically, came together as a group with wildly different political and ideological philosophies. But I will say that as human beings, we want to try and do what's good and right, and
and right, and that's evident on this committee. Despite the different political spectrums that we may have come from, we all are Salemites, and we want to do what's good and right for the city. We were given an assumption and then an equation that we had to solve for, and from there, we put together a menu that you guys get to choose from. There are nine votes in this room that matter. They're all on the other side of this desk. And so, we're not going to tell you what we think is politically feasible or politically right. That's what you get paid the big bucks for. And so, what we're going to do is just tell you what we think makes the most amount of sense. We had, started out with 40-plus options, and we whittled it down, we added to it. I think if you talked to most people on the committee, they would tell you that they would have preferred to just run the meetings ourselves and just see where that led us and have more robust communication and conversations around the topic. But with that, I feel good about what we're going to present to you tonight as being a solid menu of options. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Scott Cantonwine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Scott Cantonwine. I served on the Revenue Task Force as a business representative from Ward 5. As TJ mentioned, we started with 41 options. We added at least one, and we found our key task was to parse down these various options. Many had limited legal viability, low financial contribution, low political currency, or in many cases, a combination of those factors. So, what we are presenting to you tonight is essentially the top seven. To continue the menu analogy that TJ started with, I will give the caveat that we wrote the menu. We are not cooking the meals, so we are not responsible for how these come out to the We broke this down into essentially three sections. You will see near-term options. These are revenue options that are currently within the city's legal authority and that have the potential to generate revenue for the city within one to two years of initiation. With some of these time estimates, I will note that one area that the task force questioned was the time to implementation. Some of these figures that we were given, we thought could be shorter, but I will just give that caveat for what it's worth. Medium-term options, these are revenue options that were within the city authority and could potentially generate revenue within two to five years of implementation. And then, finally, long-term options. These are revenue options that would require significant change to state law, city policy, or require action and collaboration in conjunction with other, either county, state, or federal I will mention the options associated with the near, medium, and long-term options, and then my colleagues and I will discuss those in turn. Under the near-term options, the recommended options are business license fees, a franchise fee increase, and an increase of the frozen base within urban renewal districts for the purpose of generating more general fund dollars. Within the medium-term options, we will present local option property tax levies, which will be tied to certain specific programs, and then also a personal income tax proposal. And then, finally, under the long-term options, there will be discussion on payment in lieu of taxes with our county, state, and federal partners, intergovernmental agreements and entities to either enhance revenue or find cost efficiencies. And then, finally, there will be some discussion on tax reform and restructuring. And now, I will turn it over to Becky Beeman to discuss some of the overarching implementation considerations that we considered.
Okay. Becky Beeman from Ward 7. These are the aspects of various options that came up over and over again in our discussions of the candidate revenue sources. Equity is at the top of our list also. It's a term that some of us love and some of us hate, so it's easier to discuss without the label. It's difficult to justify taking money from people who don't make enough money to live. On the other hand, there are plenty of people in Salem who maybe don't want to pay more in taxes, but doing so wouldn't impact them very much. So, before City Council finalizes a plan to implement any of these options, we strongly recommend you consider their impact on the people living on a shoestring. For example, someone who gets paid $20 an hour but can only get four hours of work a week, or an elderly person living in a big old house, paid off by insurance when their spouse died, but living on social security and the money from their reverse mortgage. Those people get squeezed by a lot. Sustainability. Serving on this task force was an honor and an educational experience, but we don't want to do it again in five years. The task force thinks it's important that an option capable of generating sustainable revenue in a truly equitable fashion be included in whatever solution package the council chooses to pursue. Sequencing. We made a point of including some revenue sources that can produce income in the near term, which is not to say we liked any of them. In fact, we had several motions at our final meeting to delete one or more of the near-term options, but we kept them so that the City Council would have some options in the near term to consider. We started with 41, added five or six, and then whittled it down. We think these are the best of a mixed lot. Minimize local economic input, impact. You have noticed that some of the community impact expressed a preference for having the businesses pay for the city shortfall, but the community also said it was very important not to negatively impact the economic, the local economy, kind of a have your cake and eat it too situation. We recognize that this is also a reflection of everyone's desire for top-notch services paid for by someone else. We don't have an answer for you, but we caution the council to be thoughtful about burdens placed on the business community, and strongly recommend you establish ongoing liaison with the business community as you finalize your selected revenue sources. Financial management. When the budget shortfall was presented to the task force, it was largely presented in level-of-effort terms. We're so many full-time equivalents short of what we need to provide such-and-such a service. This isn't a very satisfying way to present the options, and it doesn't provide much insight into the consequences of keeping the FTEs per thousand residents where they are. So, then, council reduces library hours and threatens future closures, and everyone expresses surprise and dismay, and the residents organize a protest. There's very little trust in the city's version of the city's financial status, and it would be beneficial to reduce unnecessary divisiveness through transparency. Has the city had a forensic audit? Share the results. Is the city adhering to best accounting practices? Does the budgeting process use most likely cost numbers in budgeting rather than worst-case figures? Most importantly, are you using the taxpayers' money well? As an example, do you still have parks maintenance organized outside of public works, which makes it more expensive, or have you folded it in so the operation can be more efficient? Public input and education. If I could stomp my feet and have it come across, I'd stomp them. We recommend that you commit to a solution package that addresses the shortfall in the fairly near future, and use the time wisely to socialize the problem and the solution with the community as you refine the elements of the solution. If you find there are smart ways to reduce the cost of city activities, you can drop an element from the package if it makes sense to do so, but it will be much harder to bring an element onboard at the last minute. Don't surprise the taxpayers with the problem or a proposed solution at the 11th hour, as we feel was done with the payroll tax. Near term.
I'm Russ Beaton, and I live in Ward 1, although I never quite figured out exactly how I got on this.
You don't do the, you're the middle term, not the near term. Do you have more to say about near term, Scott?
Yeah, I've got three slides.
Yeah, he's got three slides to do.
Are you?
Yeah, he wants to go first.
Good. Well, we'll get our act together here shortly.
I think Russ was just embodying how excited we are about these various options. He wanted to, he wanted to go first. So, I'm going to go through three of the near-term options, the first of which was business license fees. As the name suggests, this would be a government-issued permit that authorizes an individual or a company to do business within, in this case, the city of Salem's jurisdiction. The estimated potential revenue, I should have noted during the executive summary, there will be an estimated potential revenue presented with each option. As you will see in this case and the others, the numbers are a very wide range, as there is significant modeling and verification of assumptions that needs to happen. In this case, the estimated potential revenue is between $8,000 and $4 million. This will be variable depending on the fees, how they're structured, and how either council or voters make that determination. Key implementation considerations, I will note that in the final meeting, this is one of the near-term options that Becky referred to, where there was a motion to strike. I don't recall the exact division of the vote, but it was a close vote. The task force strongly recommends structuring this fee in a progressive way so as not to harm small or local businesses. This might, this might look like calibrating the fee to headcount, revenue, some other measure that makes sure that we protect our small local businesses, the laundromats, the small businesses that our community relies on, but may not be flush with cash to afford a high business license fee. Secondly, the task force highly recommends that the city seeks input from the business community on how to craft any potential business licensing program. In some informal meetings that some of the task force members held with the Chamber of Commerce, it was very apparent that transparency is a key issue in understanding the city's financial situation. This could also be advanced with the creation of a standing committee linking leaders in the business community with city government, maybe some sort of a business engagement committee or financial excellence committee. The task force recommends communicating the benefits of a business license fee. For example, there are ways that the fee can be structured to ensure that public safety requirements are met by certain businesses. One example is currently food carts are licensed to ensure compliance with food handling, food safety rules. There may be a nexus that the City Council can communicate to tie licensing with a public safety benefit. Additionally, the city could provide services in exchange for, in exchange for payment of the business license. This may be particularly relevant to businesses within the Central Business District. It was noted within our task force proceedings that this funding source may not need to be taken to a public vote. It may be able to be enacted through council action. However, a recurring theme within the task force was that matters that financially impact a population necessitate a consultation on that population. I think the, the desire to see public vote where a public vote can be taken was very strong. And finally, this funding source can help facilitate other city functions, whether that's using business license registration to comply with food safety, whether it's ensuring accurate information for first responders. So, this could be used to help accomplish those existing tasks. The second near-term option that we presented for consideration is a franchise fee increase. Franchise fees are right-of-way fees assessed to utility providers for the use of city right-of-way for distributing their utility services or products. The estimated potential revenue, again, a wide range from just under $6,700 to nearly $6.6 million. The key implementation considerations that the task force wishes to share, measures should be put in place to ensure that fee increases do not exceed, whether it's the annual federal cost of living adjustment, whether it's tied to some CPI or some other metric to ensure that the fee increases do not outpace utility pricing, especially for lower-income or more vulnerable citizens. And that's in the same vein as the second consideration, is that residents would likely experience this fee as an increase in the utility bills, so again, being sensitive to how that might impact certain populations. And then, the final near-term option is increasing the frozen base within the urban renewal agencies. The city's urban renewal agency could permanently increase the frozen base, which would result in less, less tax increment dollars going to the agency for reinvestment within those urban renewal districts, but on the flip side, could, could be used to show more general fund dollars available for general fund services. The estimated potential revenue is between $1 and $3 million. However, a full model and economic development impacts are still remaining to be done. The considerations here, if the URAs frozen base is increased, it cannot be reduced. So, this is, from a policy standpoint, this is not a flexible option. Secondly, this option will appear as the city moving money from one budget item, the urban renewal agency, over to general fund availability. So, in terms of generating new revenue, this does not do that on a practical basis. The Revenue Task Force did not examine activities within urban renewal that could be adversely impacted, and it is, it is very possible that there could be negative impacts because of this policy change, which would be inconsistent with city polling that showed a desire to avoid this kind of outcomes. And the final challenge with this recommendation is it is directly opposed to the purpose of the URAs in that it takes that additional tax increment financing out of the URA for reinvestment grant programs, property-enhancing programs, and instead redirects those funds in kind of a financial gymnastics way. But as a near-term option with a quick runway, that is one of the options that we're presenting. Thank you.
Well, I apologize for the false start. I would like to talk about the medium-term options, and first, I want to say, though, that the task force, as Becky's intro implies, was faced with a syndrome from the start, and it's a syndrome we're all familiar with. The folks want the services, the folks don't want to pay for the services. And I would like to offer a dynamic, over time implication of that. The growing inequality of income and wealth in our society, which is a great matter of focus for my discipline of economics these days, has tended to move, I don't want to pay for the services, I want the services to, I, I need the services, and I can't pay for the services. This has put a squeeze on budgets everywhere, and again, it's a syndrome that we've long been familiar with. And I think some of the, this has been aware, the task force is always aware of that ongoing, and we hope that some of our proposals essentially speak to that syndrome. First of the medium-term options is the local option property tax levy. We don't need to say a lot about that since property taxes have been on our minds for the entire six months that we've met. We have a strong recommendation to structure a levy to pay for specific services that are important to the community. Examples, we could create a livability levy that would fund key quality-of-life services, including library, parks, recreation, Center 50-plus. Or, for example, we could create a public safety levy that would fund police and fire services. Obviously, these fund differing sorts of services, and you heard in the survey results sort of the mixed bag of action, of reactions to all that that you would find in the, in the community. We're pleased that we can back out now and let you make that choice. Obviously, a local option property tax levy requires approval every five years. I believe it's the task force's opinion that this would, this, this would be an interim-type measure that might phase out as more substantial revenue options kick in. Can I borrow some? I've got a dry lip. Thank you, Scott. That's one of the nicest things you've ever done for me. Let's move to what is going to be, I think, a major topic of discussion ongoing, and that's a recommendation that you consider a personal income tax. Thank you very much. Should have done that for myself at the beginning. We have a strong recommendation to ensure that an income tax would be levied in an equitable manner. Now, as the task force noted, it's been noted here tonight, equity is in the eye of the beholder. So, phrases like, every ought, everyone ought to pay their fair share. I've raised that question in different groups, and it starts an argument about what fair share really is. different groups, and it starts an argument about what fair share really is. So here, again, you're the politicians, and that's what you get paid the big bucks You would be giving away the advantages in an equity sense of an income tax were you not to make it a progressive tax, in that rates increase on your marginal income as your income goes up. Indeed, I think it's the task force's strong opinion that the equity criteria that we adopted as our given criteria, as part of our given criteria, is most easily managed in a policy sense through an income tax. It's the one you can really adjust so that people pay more as their ability to pay goes up. We also, and Becky will say more about this shortly, a strong recommendation to combine the personal income tax with overarching tax reform. If we heard any one thing in the extensive and excellent background data we were given at the start of the task force, it's that since the property tax, for reasons we all understand, most of which are legislative or in state law, property tax cannot do the job in the long run without dramatic cuts in city budget. Well, to me, this spells tax reform is a necessary feature. Tax reform could be defined as instituting new taxes that you haven't used before, doing away with old taxes, or taxes that, or fees that are either regressive or unpopular. So the income tax would provide the council with an option, the city, with an option of tax reform that would allow alleviation of certain other taxes. We did some revenue scenario building in terms of what an income tax could raise. You've got that in your packet as demonstration elements. And tax rates ranging from a quarter of 1% for people over $70,000 a year, and then half of 1% between 100 and 150, three-quarters of 1% to 150 to 200, and so on. You've got scenarios in here. We all want to emphasize to you, those scenarios are not what we recommend. They're simply to show you a range of what could be done with the income tax. So in closing, I will make one comment that we have alluded to quite a bit here tonight, and that is about impact on the local economy. As you consider a, if you imagine a progressive income tax where there's a floor below which low and moderate, low-income earners pay nothing, and then the percentage on that marginal tax rate goes up into the higher ranges of income distribution, it's possible to imagine that an income tax will be paid. Not possible, I'm an economist, I'll say that's the way it will happen. An income tax, if it's paid by high-income-earning people, that will pull money that is passive in the economy now, that has come out of savings, that come out of a bank account or whatever. It will not impact the expenditure patterns already present in the community. What that means is, then, an income tax, and the more progressive it is, the more this would be the case, an income tax actually pulls money into the community that is not actively being spent. I've had quite a bit to do throughout my career with economic development, and I will say, this is exactly like attracting a new business into town. It's the holy grail of economic development. And therefore, again, a progressive income tax will tend to have a positive effect on the economy. And I hope that other members of the task force, with their, as TJ implied, vast ideological differences, will not seriously take issue with me on that. I'll end there. Thank you.
Does anybody want to ask Russ any questions on this one? It did get socialized with the chamber as part of our work on this. And it wasn't, it was a sort of thing where they really wanted to know about it, as opposed to just do a "get out of here" response. So I think that was, and then do--
Yeah, let's finish up with your presentation, and then we'll do questions on all the topics, I think.
Okay. Payment in lieu of taxes, you're all familiar with that. When we started talking about this, we called it pilot, and we confused each other because it sounded like a one-time trial. And we don't want a one-time, we want it to be immediate and continuing. So in this particular slide, it says we don't know how much you can get, but we think you ought to go for it. It talks about going after not only the state government, but the county. I don't know if you'd ever get the feds to cough up anything, but the county's a possibility. But the nonprofits, probably not so much. So this option talks about going after all of those categories. They're all included in here for completeness, but we're going after the state, please. Next slide. Intergovernmental agreements and inter-entity agreements. I want to start this option discussion by thanking you all for the very real progress we have finally made in addressing the problem of homelessness. I have seen a real reduction in the number of houseless persons clustered in commercial areas, and I feel a sense of hope whenever I go by the tiny house village on Center Street. With the navigation center coming online, we will have a real capability to assist people in moving into better situations and improving their lot in life. And this didn't happen until the city stepped up and addressed the issue of shelter. Thank you. I know there's a desire on the part of some in Salem government to shift the burden of dealing with homelessness off the city. It was evident in the tasking given to the revenue task force, where restoring homeless services to the budget was the last of several paths forward, implying we need to find funds for all the other things before we're going to buy back homeless services. This can't be done. You can't move it off of the city's agenda without intergovernmental or interentity agreements about what services are to be covered and the budget for those services. The county wasn't housing the homeless before, and the city stood up to do what they could. It is highly unlikely that any county officials would take the job on now, to the extent it needs to be taken on, without a formal agreement. The county, city, and school district all share in the revenue stream from property taxes. If the city council chooses to pursue some sort of tax reform, and the revenue task force hopes you do so, having strong relationships and agreements in place will be essential to successfully changing how the property tax revenue is divided and used. This year, as the COVID money ran out, city, county, and school district experienced significant budget problems. Just as the property tax revenue stream is proving inadequate to the city's needs, the county and school district are facing shortfalls. And by the way, logically, if the city gets payment from the state and/or county in lieu of taxes, shouldn't that money be divided, just as the other property tax revenue is? Next slide, please. Tax reform or restructuring. The operating fee and any new proposed franchise fee increase are inherently inequitable in that they treat the well-off and the poor the same. It may seem fair in a way, but it is not right to take money from people who make so little that they get subsidies from the federal government for food. Property taxes can also be problematic in that there are largely elderly people with houses paid for long ago who subsist on social security benefits. Property is an illiquid asset. It's not like taxing a portion of a liquid asset, like income. The task force strongly recommends the council do additional work through a subcommittee or a separate targeted task force with the objective of shifting the city's tax structure to a more equitable model. The city should consciously focus on making this simple for all those impacted by any new tax. For example, add a line to the Oregon tax forms rather than having a separate form for the city tax, even if it takes longer to implement this way. If you mitigate the property tax burden during this reform process, you will have to have agreements with the county and school district, or any property tax reduction will be gobbled up by one or both of them, providing no relief to the taxpayer. Discussing tax reform on a statewide basis is probably best, given the state-determined property tax structure. And that concludes our options. Does the task force want to correct anything that we said if we misrepresented what you believe us to have done? Okay. Questions?
Well, thank you. Thank you for your work. We really appreciate all members of the task force and the work you've done for the city, and especially the four of you who have presented to us tonight. Counselor Nordeig.
Sure. This is a lot of work, and I look forward to really thinking on all of these options that you presented today. Of the options before us today, which ones had the strongest support from this task force and which ones were the most divisive that you've listed tonight?
I will say that the short-term ones, people voted to kick them off the island at the last meeting. We didn't want to present them to you. They were divisive. And when we voted on them, they were close splits.
All of the short-term ones?
No, just which, well, kind of all of them.
I believe the business license fee was the only one on this--
Well, there were two that they wanted to-- franchise fee, that was the other one? Thank you.
So at the end of the day, however, the vote to send these recommendations, this list to us overall was unanimous, I understand? Or--
It was majority.
No. It was a majority. It wasn't unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Was it a strong majority, or?
I would correct that. The full packet at the end, the vote was unanimous to approve.
That's right.
During the deliberations on each option during the last several meetings, there were votes, some were unanimous, some were split, some were very close to move things forward. But this final packet, full packet, was a unanimous vote from the task force.
Thank you.
Counselor Gwynn.
Mr. Mayor, my question wasn't fully answered. My question was the most divisive, which you did answer, but I also asked, which were the ones that had the most support? Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the income tax, which was actually socialized with the business community, is probably the one that has hope, but you could screw it up real easy.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that response. I think the payment in lieu of taxes was a fairly non-confrontational option, as well as the intergovernmental agreements and entities. I would be slightly careful. The personal income tax was certainly socialized on many levels, but I would be very careful in implying that there was any sort of endorsement or agreement from either the task force or certainly the Chamber of Commerce.
I would add to that. Recall that we are recommending to you things you need to think about. And maybe it's a cop-out, but the task force retreated into, well, let's leave this on the agenda. And for instance, most of these taxes as a, our proposals as a vote passed unanimously out of the task force. But that unanimousness, if there is such a noun, would be that give it to the council to think about as a menu. And so, there you go. There are probably members of the, well, there are certainly members of the task force who said, I would vote to pass it on to the council, and if it comes to a vote, I will vote against it.
Counselor Gwynn.
I have a question for you, Russ. From your experience, can you provide an example of the progressive personal income tax that you described making a contribution in a city?
Excuse me, making a contribution? Please ask that again.
Sorry, I had muted. Can you provide an example of the progressive personal income tax that you described making a contribution in a city?
Making a contribution? Well, let me set up a hypothetical situation. Many of the scenarios, and you'll see this in your packet, exempt everyone under $70,000 in income. The rates then at the top category in the scenarios we give you, in those scenarios, the categories in those scenarios are arbitrary. They are ticketed or fit to existing state income tax data. The data that was used to build the scenarios came from actual income tax filings from the state of Oregon in Salem, so it's actual numbers. Suppose then at $500,000 and over, the marginal tax rate would be 3%. There are scenarios in your packet that have that. That would make a contribution to the city, if I understand the question of income that is progressive. It would come from higher income-earning people. It would not have the effect of, that we saw, say, in the payroll tax, people being able to say, this money takes bread off the table of hard-working-class families, et cetera. When I describe the syndrome that results from higher inequality in our system, the result of that is the middle class is being hollowed out. This is a fact. It's not an ideological point, it's a statistical point. The middle class is being hollowed out. There are many more people that are struggling, and the income is being shifted up above into the higher categories. An income tax fits that income distribution. And I think you need to tax where money is there to pay for the tax. And this would result in a more equitable financial structure for the city. And again, that's a criteria we unanimously agreed on. It was built into, as I read it, the charge for the task force. I don't know how to answer that any other way.
Is there another city that this tax is working? That it's been implemented and it's working?
Is it working anywhere else?
Her question was, is there another city where this has been implemented?
Oh, well--
Let's do one personal side, please.
There are many cities that apply this. There are not too many in Oregon, Maluma County, Eugene has an element of that. Every county in Indiana has an income tax. Every school district in Iowa has an income tax. Many cities in the east do. And I have been in touch with some of them. I wish, I would strongly recommend, as the council over the next few months gets into this with staff, that you look into all different kinds of administrative questions. Devil's in the details with regard to how this would be administered. Our scenario building builds, keys the income tax to adjusted gross income, AGI. That's line seven on your state return and line 11 on your federal return. If you did that, it could be a very simple matter of collection, tag it to that figure on your state or federal tax. And certainly, it could be done without-- And certainly, it could be done without the city of Salem having to require a separate tax form.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the members who presented tonight and every member of the task force for the time they took to consider this very important issue. Just a couple of comments before I move forward. You know, I have been here as a council for three and a half years. Every single year, we got closer to this point where we are. I don't see any reading of the math that shows that, you know, we have anything but a revenue issue. We are, I would argue, the most efficient city of our size in the state of Oregon. We have 1,000 fewer, you know, employees funded through the general fund than Eugene does, and they're identical to our size. So I appreciate the need for revenue. I appreciate the diverse options that have been presented. I fully accept that reality shows us that the middle class is shrinking and that we have a level of wealth inequality currently that's unlike even the robber baron era of 100 or more years ago. So, I mean, I think that this problem is real. It's not that people don't want to pay more in revenue or taxes, that they literally can't. So they're stretched really thin. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness that all this is being presented in. I mean, it's been alluded to maybe three or four times that, you know, we as council get paid the big bucks. And I just want to reiterate for simplicity sake that everyone on this body, I am certain understands, that every single member of this council is just like the task force. We're all volunteers. We're literally not paid. The mayor's not paid. You know, we spend 15 to 30 hours a week doing this thing, and, you know, we're doing the best that we can despite the scarce resources that we have. So, you know, right now, it kind of feels like we've got a diverse list of options. I'm hearing the things that can happen the quickest are some of the most controversial. I think that something big, like an income tax, like I'm open-minded because I'm committed to raising revenue in a way that, you know, funds the vital services that, in my opinion, based on evidence, literally can save lives, being our first responder, library services, and police, just to name a few. So, you know, when I approach this, and I'm going to digest this over the next couple of weeks, I believe, you know, staff's going to bring it back to council to talk about next steps and actions, I kind of want to get a sense of, like, what should we, in our limited time, be focused on? I mean, my thought would be that, you know, an income tax, a progressive income tax is kind of a new big deal, especially at the scale I think is being discussed at. And is there something that's more kind of medium-term, like an option levy, that has more of like an actual recommendation, like, hey, do this, that could fund library and, you know, maybe fire? Just as an example to start a conversation, has that been presented in this package? You know, like kind of a clear, hey, guys, move forward with this? Because I think I might be losing it amongst all of the details that have been presented so far.
The local option levy is the other midterm option.
And so, thank you for confirming that there is a midterm levy. Just a follow-up question. That's one that there's not specifics, though. Like, we're all, we've got the satisfaction survey results. I mean, was there any consensus in how it should be crafted? I mean, in my opinion, it's probably got to include the library, but does this body have any recommendations on that?
We gave two examples. One was a life, quality-of-life focus, which would include library, recreation center 50-plus, and something else. Parks, thank you. The other one was a safety, which would be fire and police.
Thank you for that. I'm very encouraged to hear that, because I think an option levy is like the simplest. It's been done elsewhere in Oregon. It's been done successfully. I'm aware that, you know, it has to be re-upped, but it buys us some time. Was it a thought to have those as two separate option levies?
I don't know that you'd want to have two.
Okay.
The problem is compression. A lot of South Salem is at the compression point. West Salem, as I recall, is not. So you're going to get an interesting effect if you do something that increases property taxes.
Right. It's definitely imperfect, and it's complicated, the compression when it applies to property taxes. But as council, we've gone over it a few times. I think I understand it as much as I can. I really appreciate hearing from you guys and answering my questions directly. I really look forward to hopefully getting some traction on something like an option levy, because, like, we don't have any wiggle room starting next year. Like, it's gone.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions? Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's go back to the payment in lieu of taxes. I'm not surprised to hear that that was a relatively uncontroversial item. I think there's broad support from many of my peers on council, and we are certainly talking about how we make that approach as our legislative committee in our most recent publicly available legislative committee meeting. If we were to go to the legislature, as you suggest here in the 25 session, how many members of the task force who are present tonight, if we asked, would you submit written testimony in favor of a payment in lieu of taxes? Raise your hands. All right, I see six. Is that six of six?
Seven, eight.
So pretty much every task force member present tonight would be willing to help us with that effort if we called upon you. Duly noted. May the city recorder reflect that in the remarks. Thank you.
And it is in the minutes that the vote to move that to the final packet was unanimous, and quite early in the process as well.
Are there additional questions? Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. Again, I will also restate, I really appreciate all the work that the revenue task force has done. I understand, having watched at least about half of them, some of the frustrations you were having. And what I could recognize is that you wanted to get to the meat of the problem and understand how you could make some decisions to bring to us. So again, thank you for all of those great efforts. I appreciate the items that you have narrowed down to us. I feel that we definitely have some that we will be able to work with. I also feel that there are some potentially overarching or things that we may not be able to achieve as a council, such as the intergovernmental contracts. Sounds great, but how long that might take and if it would be able to happen, I don't know. Something that I hope that we will be able to find out. But again, I appreciate recognizing that it is something that is not just isolated funding that we need for such things as homelessness, mental health care, is really not totally the city's responsibility. I mean, it's really not. But being able to find help in other governmental agencies may be a huge challenge. So again, I hope we can resolve some of this so we don't have to bring you back in a few years. I wanted to ask a little bit about your comments on the urban renewal base. It seemed that that's something that some feel could be helpful, but it's really only in the short term and not really adding to general funds. Would anyone like to speak to that for a moment?
Sure. Yeah, I think, you know, getting to the point where we can close some of these urban renewal districts should be a goal of every city council. And so, you know, increasing the frozen base is a step in that direction, and it provides funding in the short term and through the long term, but at the expense of what those urban renewal districts are trying to accomplish. So it's a policy decision for you to make now and with impact into the future.
Great. Thank you. And for the levy options that you recommended, I appreciate trying to specify the funding direction. I think that, I think it is smart to be able to identify. It's been clear in the surveys that have been done that people want to know, if they're paying for something, they want to know where the money is going. And it is frustrating, because oftentimes, we feel we've told them, but it doesn't seem to be heard. So something that is simple and hopefully understood will help.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips.
Thank you again. Yeah, I just, I guess, a couple of comments. I absolutely agree that we got to be clear in our communication moving forward. I think that simplicity is better and, you know, really giving people, trying to reestablish the communication and the trust that if we say we're going to fund libraries or fire or something like a combination of those two, that that's what we do. But anything we do in terms of an option levy that helps the general fund will help all aspects of our essential services. So there's, you know, the benefit is beyond just what we raise the funds for through a potential option levy. I guess my last thing is, I would be shocked, and I think I got from my Counselor Nordike, who asked earlier, that the task force who's present, it's like 100% support, you know, a payment in lieu of taxes. I mean, I'm shocked that it's only 79 or 80% of those surveyed were in support of that. I think that our body, you know, Mayor Chris Hoy, as a member of the state legislature, introduced a motion to the effect of getting a payment in lieu of taxes. So this is something we've been working on for years, and I know that this past year, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce testified in support, and yet, once again, it didn't go anywhere. So, you know, we have broad support from council. I would be shocked if it wasn't unanimous. Broad support from the revenue task force for a payment in lieu of taxes. But does anyone know of any leverage? Like, we've got a lot of people at our state delegate to the, you know, House and Senate, but how do we reach out to other communities to get their support for something like this?
Is that a rhetorical question?
I mean, I'm not surprised if that's the effect, but I guess I'm just trying to, you know, because we know it's popular. We've been working on it for years, but despite its popularity here in Salem, it hasn't yet happened. So I guess it's rhetorical, but maybe I could be surprised.
We've been working on a strategy to garner support from other communities. The trick is to try to fashion something that might pass the legislature, but yet doesn't financially cripple the state. So in other words, if it's just Salem-specific, we might not garner a broad support from around the state, but if we were to go more broadly, then it might have such a financial impact on the state that it wouldn't be popular that way. So it's a real balance. We are exploring all options. We have never stopped that conversation in terms of payment in lieu of taxes. We continue them constantly, and we are working on ways to leverage the state and to trade any sort of, anything that we have. We're working on it. So just, that's about all I can say at this point.
And I guess just, did any of the task force members have anything? I know, Mayor, you've been working on this for years.
I think there's maybe a comment.
If you were to look at actually splitting any money we get with the school district and the county, you might be able to get some of them more involved.
They have been involved in those conversations. So those are active conversations. Are there other questions for the members of the task force? Counselor Varney.
Thank you very much. I don't really have any questions. I, just a couple of comments. I really enjoyed watching the meetings. I really did. And one of the reasons was, well, when I think about the task force, boy, oh, boy, yeah, all the way up to the, beginning with the process of the selection of members and the representation, it was amazing seeing everybody with their broad range of viewpoints and interests and all coming together with a momentous task of taking 40-whatever options to look at and narrow them down. And I was just amazed with the process, the respectful communication during discussions, deliberations, the narrowing down of the options at the different levels. And there were diverse opinions. That was echoed in the survey that you all took early on as to kind of which direction to go. So I just wanted to say, I was really impressed. I'm really, I think these recommendations and the reasoning behind them that you've expressed are all really helpful, and I wanted to say I really appreciate all the time and hours you volunteered to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any additional questions? If not, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Tully, do we have another slide? I believe, maybe a slide or two. Questions? And I think we've had that one. And next steps? We wanted to pause here and provide the community council and the committee with a brief overview of what our next steps are going to be. But before I get into that, I'd just like to, again, thank the committee, the revenue task force for your extraordinary work, Moss Adams, and the staff team who supported the process. I remember when we appointed a 27-member task force, I was like, oh, my God, that's going to be so unwieldy, and it was. But it also was effective and powerful and was broadly representative of our community. So I'm glad that we had the number of people that we had, even though it was an extraordinarily tight squeeze in this room. It was uncomfortable, and I was sitting out in the audience. So thank you to everybody who sat through it. It's heartwarming to see such levels of commitment from our community volunteers and such professionalism from our consultants and staffs. While we, while there were many strong opinions in the room, there was no shortage of emotion. The discussion and deliberations were respectful and productive. It truly was a team effort. So congratulations to everybody who participated. We anticipate using the next council work session on August 19th to dig into these recommendations. We, of course, welcome your clarifying questions and help identifying any additional information you need to better understand the recommendations of the revenue task force. We will be taking time to meet with counselors on an individual basis to hear your feedback and input, and that will help shape our August 19th work session. Staff anticipate conducting further polling and additional focus groups following the August work session to better understand the viability of any measure that may be advanced to voters. Staff will come to the August 19th meeting prepared to offer a plan for moving forward, including a timeline, budget for this work, and an overview of the proposed community engagement effort. Some community members have asked if we will advance this measure to the voters in November. While this may be technically and theoretically feasible if council acted in early August, literally at our first meeting in August, some, you know, a couple of weeks from now, it doesn't really seem viable to me, and I certainly would not recommend that course of action to you. I'm excited to conclude this phase of the process and look forward to continuing to work with you and the community to find a preferred path forward. So thank you. We're here to answer any final questions you might have.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we are adjourned.